Yes, go ahead.
A announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given, and that is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA ping pong afford their six at section of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Pareek.
Here.
Mr. Passad. Mr. Ready.
Present.
Ms. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Present.
We also have our board attorney, Mr. King. Our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, and our board engineer, Mr. Holloway.
Present.
Here.
Okay, let's start off with the four of the legions, please.
My four legions to the blood of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that's not on the senior's agenda? I hear none seen none. We have two resolutions to memorialize. First one is Wentworth. Mr. Pareek, would you like to read that one?
Sure. I make a motion to memorialize the application twenty colon ten resolution, Kevin Wentworth, twenty ninth Centvitas Road, block sixty-six, lot eleven, zone R three C variance to construct an entranceway stairs retaining walls patio deck with stairs, walk driveway and AC contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, colon four, come on nine, ten, and thirteen, and four thirty dash two seventy-five, uh, X, I don't know what that is, four thirty, uh, dot ten, dot I.
Your second?
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Pareek.
Yes.
Mr. Passad.
Yes.
Mr. Ready.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Um, I voted against it. Do I still memorialize it?
Did you vote against it?
Yeah.
I apologize.
I believe I did, right?
You did.
All right. Mr. Willins.
Yes.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Willins, would you like to read Diana and Devon Hayes?
Mr. German, the board approves the application following resolution memorializing the grant of relief requested by the town and Devon Hayes. Diana has my application number twenty nineteen for permission to construct a thirteen by foot by eight inch by nineteen open text with extension and stairs and ships which would result in various for yards and ports. Uh, guaranteed card setback building coverage and previous coverage on this owning ordinance of the township for shipping to our hills which see the sea variance relieved for such reasons as placed in the record relating to the property known as eleven Woodland Road car shipping disaster in the year of block ninety-one, block sixteen on town map of townships for shipping projects.
Second, ready. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Mr. Kaplan.
Uh, we're not.
Worried for this. I apologize. Mr. Pareek.
Yes.
Mr. Passad.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
I voted against this.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Mr. Ready.
Yes.
Mr. Willins.
Yes.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Yes. Okay, any other housekeeping?
No.
Oh, let's do the, uh, everybody have a chance to look at the calendar? I, I don't know if I was the only one that got that email just in a minute.
I didn't send it out to everyone because I was looking for.
All right, so look, look over the schedule and, uh, we'll memorialize this next meeting. Is that okay, Nora, or do you want to do it tonight?
Uh, that's fine. Um, I, if I have to book a, um, commercial, I'll just have to wait till then.
Sorry, so look, look over the list and we'll hold on at next meeting. Okay, um. Application twenty oh four Jean and Colette Simon, eleven Lea Way, block seven thirty-four, C variance to construct the six-foot-high solid fence.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. James Pryor, the office in.
Mr. Pryor, I didn't recognize you with your, uh, camouflage there.
That's one of the things that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pryor.
One of the consequences, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, wow.
Uh, at, at some point, we'll get rid of these. We can all recognize each other again.
Mr. Pryor.
In any event, um, Mr. Chairman, representing Jean Mark and Colette Simon, uh, this evening. They have, uh, property eleven Lea Way, um, and it is a property of a single-family dwelling. It's a through lot, and the reason we're here is what they'd like to do is put in a fence, um, but a fence that basically, uh, serves the backyard, although it is technically a front yard because it is a through lot. Uh, if you have the application, as well as all the attachments, you'll note that, uh, it fronts on Lea Way, the rear property is, uh, Smith Road, and so, uh, they are limited to, uh, in on, in what is functionally their backyard, a four-foot-tall fence, uh, that has to be, uh, they cannot be a, uh, an opaque fence. It's got to be, I think, fifty percent transparent is what the ordinance provides for, uh, and there's a, uh, submission, uh, a marked up ease or a marked up survey that, uh, the applicant did that shows where they would like to locate the fence, and as you can see, it's limited to, uh, the rear yard. What I'd like to do, uh, since I've just given you the background here, is call Jean Mark, uh, Simon, so that he can explain a little bit further about what is, uh, about the reason for this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Jean Mark.
So you raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes, I did.
And, uh, for the record, uh, can you state and spell your name?
Jean Mark J P A N I N M T O C Simon S I N W.
And you're the owner of the subject property?
Yes, I am.
You're sworn to me. Lower your hand.
Uh, Jean Mark, you own the property with your wife, Colette, who's here tonight, right?
That's correct.
And, uh, how long have you, um, owned this property?
Approximately fifteen years.
And, uh, who resides at the property?
My wife, myself, and my three kids.
Okay, and, um, uh, Jean Mark, in this case, um, um, I explained to the board that property is a through lot with Smith Road in the back and Lea Way in the front. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, uh, you and/or your wife had, had some prior interaction with, uh, the township, and at some point, you actually got a zoning permit put in a fence. Is that correct, in the rear yard?
Yes.
And the type of fence that you were proposing was six-foot tall, correct?
Correct.
And it was a solid wooden fence, or I'm sorry, solid fence of, uh, what type?
Vinyl.
Um, you actually went out and purchased a fence, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, now subsequently, uh, it came to the zoning officer's attention that under the ordinance, because it was a through lot, is qualified as a rear yard, so you could not put in that fence. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right, and therefore, you're now coming before the board seeking approval for variance relief so that you can put the fence that you purchased, uh, into the rear yard. Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Were you in front of the board before?
Can you use a microphone? Microphone, gotta use a microphone.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Were you in front of the board before about the same issue?
I think it's my understanding that, that they did come before the board at some point, but that I don't think there was a final determination on it. There wasn't a, uh.
I think the applicant disappeared.
I'm sorry?
I think the applicant disappeared from our venue, and that was the last we heard of it, if my memory is certainly correct.
Well, I know, you, you, there was no final determination, so, um, there was no decision on the merits.
Yes.
So, um, uh, this may ultimately, uh, you may have heard some of this before, but obviously, that, at some point, they decided to engage counsel to pursue the application. So, um, Jean Mark, um, can you explain, um, uh, what it is, uh, why it is that you're looking for, uh, a six-foot-tall, uh, vinyl fence, uh, in that portion of your property which constitutes a, the, a front yard facing on, on Smith Road?
It's actually quite simple. Because of the way the property is set up, the street that's in the back is about six feet higher than the, the property itself, so in order for us to actually have a functional backyard with full privacy, we would need a six-foot fence be put back that close where we, where we asked to put it or request to put it, so we could have that backyard, you know, full, full effect of functionality.
And you're asking for approval for the board for a six-foot-tall fence, vinyl in design, uh, and material, um, and it would be located, as shown on the marked up survey submitted to the board, uh, a few feet off the, off of Smith Road. Is that correct?
Yes, there'll actually be a request to put from the monuments that's back, back there.
Would you have a gate, um, at Smith Road?
Yes.
Now, you have no intention of putting in a driveway along those lines, right? Although you theoretically could, you're not going to put a driveway in so you can access Smith Road, right?
No.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna continue to use the driveway that accesses Lea Way. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, and although this would be a, a, a solid fence and a, a, a six-foot-tall fence and therefore, uh, is not permitted, you're not doing anything, you're not requesting the fence for any purposes of hiding anything you're doing or anything along those lines. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um. Mr. Chairman, I don't think I have any further, anything further for, uh, Mr. Simon.
Any questions by the board? Snyder?
Um, yeah, first of all, uh, from the street, you're a foot, you said, off the street?
I say monuments. There's a monuments back there, which is approximately eight feet from, from the street. And we're just requesting to be able to put the fence a foot away from that.
A foot inland towards your house from that, you're talking about that square monument? You, you would say monument, I'm, I'm just.
Yes.
It's a square monument that's on the ground? Is that what it is?
That's correct.
Okay, so it would be behind that towards your property, towards those houses? And if I'm not mistaken, your property would be the only one of that stretch of houses that would have this six-foot fence facing Smith Road? Am I getting that correct as well?
That would be correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just, just for the record, the application says the, uh, fence is two foot away from monument.
Two foot away, oh, I, I mistake again.
I have a question, uh, why does the fence has to be solid fence?
The reason for that is for the full privacy.
Okay, because, uh, our ordinance doesn't allow a solid fence and, and a six-foot fence, right, both? So, you, you could have put, uh, you know, a fence, a fifty percent, uh, transparency or, uh, you know, something like that, but you decided to put a solid fence, and that requires a variance. You do realize that, right?
That's correct.
All right.
Have you considered landscaping as a set, instead of a fence, or you're trying to recoup because you bought the fence?
Yes, two ways, yes, and then the landscape, the landscape that I want to, I would like to put there, I would like to protect it as well from the deer, so if I don't have that fence.
Well, you have, there's deer resistant trouble either to go back.
That doesn't work, I'm sorry.
I disagree.
That'll be, that'll be the, the reason.
So, when you say privacy, privacy from whom? As I'm looking, it, you have thirty-five mile-per-hour traffic on Smith Road. Am I correct on that? Is that thirty-five or twenty-five? I think it's thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Right, and then, on the opposite side of that road, I see a very small house. Am I, do I have that correct too?
That's, uh, I believe it's a pump house with a town.
Oh, yeah, so it's a water pump station?
Right.
So that's not even inhabited? That's just a matter of, okay, got it.
There's actually nobody behind there. The next house is, is about, I'm trying to say eight hundred feet, which has, you know, has a driveway facing Smith Road, but, you know, there's, there's no, there's no houses back there.
And then, uh, just a point of clarification on your introduction, I don't seem to remember him getting a permit initially, so I know that was in part of your dissertation. I don't think that's accurate.
That's what my question was going to be. Can we revisit what was stated there tonight? You went for a permit. Was that permit granted, and then you bought the fence, and then we're told no?
Well, look, uh, if I can, uh, Colette Simon probably has more familiarity with that particular element. Can I, can I call her? Sure.
Name, raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board's true self you got, and for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Colette Simon, Colette, C O L L E T T E, Simon, S I N W.
And you swear a firm?
Yes.
And you're the subject owner of the property as well?
Yes.
All right, thank you, your sworn.
Colette, I think you've heard the conversation here. Um, I was the impression there was a permit, but make, let's make sure we have the hundred percent accurate, what exactly transpired. If there was no permit, and I need to correct the record on my part, we'll do that, but what did transpire?
You're absolutely correct. We got the permit, we paid the money, and then.
Yeah, can you please speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We applied for the permit, we got it, and they told us we could go ahead. Once we got the permit, I went ahead and I bought the fence. Over six thousand dollars I paid, and then I got a letter stating that they rescinded the permit, and then I tried to find out why. Why did you let me buy it, and then now it's rescinded? And they told me, well, I have two backyard, and I didn't understand that I have two, two front yard. I'm sorry. I couldn't understand because my address is eleven Lea Way, and yes, we were here before, and I figured, you know what, this is bigger than me, because I don't understand why they're saying we have two front yard, two, right, so that's how I ended up getting counsel, because.
So you went and got a permit for this fence?
Yes.
And in that application, you wrote six feet, solid vinyl, same description?
Correct.
You got an approval?
Yes, correct.
They got a zoning permit.
A zoning permit.
They got a zoning, they didn't need a, they don't need a building.
No, I understand that, but they were, they were getting, what I'm trying to figure out is.
They got a zoning permit, but then it was rescinded.
They followed the steps.
Because someone realized that it was a front.
Right, and in that time, when you got the approval, between the approval and the letter rescinding the approval, you purchased the fence between those two dates?
Yes.
Yeah, but from, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but my recollection was, we were ardently trying to get a hold of this paperwork that, you know what I mean, that reflected approval, that reflected approval, and nobody could come up with it.
That is correct.
And that's where we were at the stalemate, so we have no proof you've got a permit.
I got, let's just time out of, that, I, I fully, I fully agree with you, but that's all ancient history, because they're, they've come back and they, and they've got a new application, and I want to understand where this fence is going to be on Smith Road. How far off the property line is this fence going to be?
Mr. Chairman, um, with the markup survey that was submitted with the application, do you have that?
Yep.
Uh, as, uh, as Mr. Simon indicated, it would be, um, you see, there's a concrete monument to be set, indicated, um, on Smith Road on.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay.
So how many feet off the property line is that?
Excuse me?
How many feet off the property line is he proposing the fence to be?
What would you propose, Jean Mark?
Two feet from the ma, that monument.
That's what he.
That monument is the property line?
Yes.
Okay, all right, how about we move it back ten feet? And you agree to put a row of, of vegetation behind it so that we, in, in five years, we don't even know there's a fence there anymore. Would you do that? Get yourself some nice Norway spruce, plant them, they grow a foot a year, they're not, they're, deer don't like them, and you got a nice vegetation back there, so people driving down the road don't see it.
I'd say ten feet from the rose.
Ten feet from your property line.
From your property line.
Ten feet, you got, you've got like a hundred and fifty feet back there. All I'm asking for is ten.
We don't want people driving down Smith Road to see just a stockade fence out of nowhere.
And normally, this would be a no.
Not even cohesive with the rest, rest of the houses that are in your neighborhood.
I could, I could put, I could plant outside the fence if that's what's.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we still would want that setback. I'm sorry.
You gotta put the trees on your property.
Mr. Pryor?
He's explaining.
I got, I got a Norway spruce in my backyard. I planted it about ten feet tall. I've got a probably a fifteen-foot shed that's right on my property line from the old neighborhood behind me, and in ten years, you can't see the shed anymore. And it's just, it's unbelievable how that, that covers the, that covers the.
And using the trees.
And they're not, and the deer don't.
I just can't wait ten years.
The curb is ten feet in from the right of.
Look, I mean, it was ten feet when I, when I got it. Ten, ten years, it's gonna be twenty feet more, and, and you know how much bigger a round is that thing? I love Norway spruce. We used to get it for our Christmas trees, you know, and we'd get them with the ball, and I would put it on the big tub, leave it in the house about seven days. I'd put it in the garage, and the first day, it's over forty-three degrees, and I already had my hole done. I had so many of them. I had one, I had to take it down.
That's right on the right of.
I had it for thirty feet. No, I did it for about fifteen years, and then they started digging the balls by the trees, so instead of making a nice round ball, they made a, a point, and now I'm trying to get this to stand up in the, in the tub.
Time is changing.
Never again. Now we got an artificial tree.
So if you got a straight line and just make it a curve, it'll be a monument here, it'll be a monument, it comes back to a straight line. They, they requested a gate in this fence. They said it back ten feet. It would make sense to have the gate back there so they could maintain.
Oh, yeah, I have no problem with a gate.
Yeah.
You probably want to have a gate in case you have to pull a piece of machinery back there. I would, I would make it like a, like a eight or ten-foot gate.
You're gonna need ten feet for these trees to grow anyway.
Yeah, they'll look, in, in a few years, it'll look really nice.
Jean Mark, you've heard what the chairman had to say. Um, do you find that acceptable or not acceptable from what you'd like to do?
Joe Foley?
No, wait, wait, Jean Mark. What, I think what the board is looking for at this point is yes or no as to whether or not that's an acceptable condition.
Can we go, can we, can they allow us, please, a turn six? Instead of going back ten, can we go back?
This isn't, this isn't a negotiation. The ten-foot should be necessary.
Mr. Pryor, we, we had extensive.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I fully.
Back and forth on this, on this matter.
I fully realize the point that you are making.
Okay. We don't, we don't approve six-foot fences anymore.
I, I.
Five foot with a foot open is as far as we'll go, except for really, really extenuating circumstances.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. Jean Mark, the chairman has asked if that is a condition that you would agree to if the board would approve the application. Is that a condition to which you would agree? The board needs a yes or no on that?
Yes.
Mr. Simon indicated yes.
That was a yes?
Yeah.
Okay, and I kind of informally polled the group here, and I think every, we're all in, we're all in agreement that that's, I think, is a very fair, um, compromise, and Mr. Pryor explained to him that he's gonna have to contact the town forester to get a, a, a system of how he's gonna plant these, and.
Well, I, I assume the forester will explain it's got to be whatever the trees are on however many.
He'll make recommendations. I'm, I'm a big Norway spruce fan because they're deer-proof. The deer don't eat them, you know, so they can, in that area, I'm sure there are a lot of deer, but, um, you know, something that, that grows so that, 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 it doesn't look like we're, we're in the bunker here, you know, like we're, we're all in the basement with Joe Biden or something, you know?
I, I'd love to comment on that, Mr. Chairman, but I'm gonna pass.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, I have no further witnesses at this point. I don't believe there's anyone else here on the application. Uh, I can make a legal argument as to satisfaction of the positive and negative criteria, but based on your comment in terms of an informal poll of the board, um, I'm, I don't have to make the legal argument if it looks like everything is where I think it is.
Nobody's shaking their head no, so, um, yeah, I, I think we can dispense with that, and there are no members of the public here, so I'm not gonna ask for questions by the public. I'm not gonna ask if there's anyone who wants to speak in affirmative or in the negative, and we'll go right on to someone making a recommendation on this one. Someone make a recommendation, Mr.?
Yeah, I'll make a recommendation.
I think, uh, the fact that we had a compromise suggested by the chairman to buy the applicant, um, that I will be voting for it.
Thank you. Someone frame a resolution so we can move on? Mr. Kaplan, you gonna do that?
Um, I, I could do it.
Okay, go ahead.
I could do it.
I got it.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, case number twenty point zero four, um, I think it's Jean Mark, right, from, uh, and Colette Simon, eleven Lea Way, block seven thirty-four, lot seventy-four, and zone APRD two. I recommend that we grant the C variance to construct a six-foot-high solid fence contrary to section four thirty dash eleven A and B, on the condition that the fence is ten feet off the property line, uh, that Norway spruces are planted to obstruct view of the fence, and.
Vegetation, vegetation, vegetation based on.
On the forester's recommendation.
Town forester.
Okay.
The ten-foot is at the Smith Road, where Smith Road is.
Property line.
Property line.
Is property, is that the property?
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Pareek.
Yes.
Mr. Passad.
Yes.
Mr. Ready.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Willins. Chairman Ira Kane.
Yes.
Chairman, thank you very much. Hopefully, hopefully, next time I see you, we won't have, uh, the masks.
Mr. Pryor, it was good to see you again. Where are you at these days?
Uh, actually, uh, uh, doing a lot of corporate in-house work.
Oh, okay.
I'll tell you about it.
Okay, good, it was good seeing you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at, oh, we're gonna get the next.
Hello, you guys can come in now.
I got another one, it's already up. Have you seen it?
Yep.
Have you seen that? The other one in the lakehead? It's horrible. It's horrible. They already put it up. It's over here. Three sides of the house.
No, I'm sorry.
We can take it down. It'd be the first time. It's a, um. Long, long view. Two-story use.
Mr. Chairman, if that application wrote down residential, um, C variance, your average on C variance is that this application wrote, wrote it down?
I know.
It may take you out of the running.
I was surprised we couldn't get it.
So Nora, where's the new calendar? Is that it up there? That little thing?
No, it's way back there. Step back further so you can see a lot more.
I don't even see it. Who called?
Yeah, you really want to see.
See the, the back, the line of bulbs that are on?
Oh, it is.
Oh, it's right around that, yeah. You guys go. You guys go third to the back to the left.
Okay, this is case 2008, 17 Longview Avenue. Construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling with attached...
No, back there.
Carport.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, council. My name is Paul Santambrogio.
Spell it, please.
Spelled S-A-N-T apostrophe capital A-N-B-R-O-G-I-O. Santambrogio. And I represent the homeowner, homeowners Zafar and Siraj Tour, 17 Longview Avenue, Block 589, Lot 15. As you know, it is a C application. It's a classic C due to the fact that the lot is a non-conforming lot. It's 50-foot wide. Apparently, your ordinance requires a 60-foot-wide lot, which brings us here. Among other things, my clients have lived in town for years and years, raised their family. As they're aging, their daughter's gonna come back and take care of them, hence the need to... Their plan is to raise their current home and construct a new four-bedroom home on the same slightly enlarged footprint. Period. I did not see a denial letter in this case. I was recently retained. I'm only working off the agenda, which mentions four bulk variances associated with this. And we'll get to them through the architect's testimony. That's okay. Okay?
You mentioned a daughter coming to live with them. One kitchen, right?
One kitchen, not a two-family home.
We're not doing any type of...
No, sir.
Multi-family unit?
Not at all.
Okay.
She's here and would testify.
Just wanna get that clear. All right.
I'd like to call Mr. Zafar Tour. Stand here, sir.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swore a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got? And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
My first name is Zafar, Z-A-F-A-R. My last name is Tour, T-O-O-R.
And you're the owner of this subject property?
I'm... Yeah, I'm the owner.
Thank you, sir. Your form.
Mr. Tour, how long have you lived in Parsippany and in that location?
Uh, I bought the property in 1978, so it's about 42 years. No, 78, so...
Forty-two?
Forty-two years. Okay, 42 years.
You raised your family there?
I raised my family.
And right now, you're there with your wife?
Yeah, yes, my wife alone.
Your intention is to improve the premises with a new construction?
That's correct.
One-family home?
That's right.
And your daughter expects to move in with you here for you?
Yeah, yeah.
All right?
Yes.
And your lot is only 50 feet wide?
Yeah, 50 feet wide.
And is that similar to other lots in the neighborhood?
Yeah, it's a whole block that I know there is every property is 50 feet wide.
I have no further questions.
Just like to mention that if he had a standard 60-foot lot, he probably wouldn't be here tonight, would he?
I think we understand that, yeah.
Okay. I just wanna get that on the record. Okay. Uh, any members of the board have any questions of this witness?
I do. The current structure's gonna stay. You're just building on top of it. Am I getting that right?
Yes, um, yeah.
Well, nope.
It's new.
No, no, no.
It's being raised.
Being raised.
Oh, it's...
R-A-Z-E-D, right?
Okay, got you. Okay. All right.
Isn't that how you spell raised?
All right, so it's gonna be knocked down. It's gonna be... All right, it's gonna be knocked down, and then they're putting up the new structure, right? Am I getting that right?
Yes, you got that right.
I just wanna make sure.
Okay.
So, when you say that the footprint is slightly enlarged... I mean, I see the specs in the front here, but the carport is still gonna remain the same size, correct?
Yes. And Mr. Qureshi, the architect, will...
Okay.
...have much detail as needed.
Any other questions by the board? Any member? Oh, go ahead.
I have a quick question. In the backyard, there are two sheds and one concrete pad or something. What is that? Three different things?
It was already there when I bought the property. The concrete was there. We never built anything on it. It's just the way it is.
What do you do with that concrete? I mean...
Nothing.
Okay.
Lady.
It's just a slab?
Yeah, yes, yeah. Uh, no, not that I know that we have plans.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none seen on. You call your next witness?
Thank you. Hey, I see.
Mr. Qureshi? Sir, you raise your right hand. You swore a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
Yes, I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name?
Ali Qureshi. A-L-I. Last name Q-U-R-E-S-H-I.
And your testimony will be architectural?
Yes.
And you have a license in New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, it is.
You provide a testimony before other boards in the state?
Yes.
And you've been qualified as an expert?
Yes, they did.
Mr. Chairman, the witness has been qualified as an expert.
Good, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Qureshi, you're familiar with the site that's before the board, is that right?
Yes, I am.
And you reviewed the Parsippany zoning ordinance as it relates to your architectural drawings?
Yes, I did.
And would you mind going through those drawings and explain the features of the new home setbacks and will address the variance violation?
Uh, well, if you guys like, I can just go over the variances as opposed to describing the whole building.
Okay.
Architectural Plan A1 and A2 show the floor plans and all four elevations of the proposed house. The only thing is, we are here because of the width of the lot. That's primarily why we are here. If we were 60 feet wide, we wouldn't have to come here. But even with smaller or less wider lot, we still comply with all the zoning setbacks, front yard, rear yard, side yard. So we are still in compliance with all these bulk variances of bulk requirements. The... Other than the side, the width, we have one shed, existing shed, which is slightly less than five feet away from the property line. It's, I believe, it's 4.7 feet.
4.3.
So required is five. It's there, but the board insists we can remove it or move it away from the property line to make it comply.
That's pretty far in the back of the house, though, isn't it? It's pretty far in the...
It's pretty far away, yes.
It doesn't really encroach on the neighbors, though. Sure, the neighbor's property must go back that far also.
Yes.
There's no building back there, is there?
It's far down. It's a very deep lot, so it's, you know, further in the back. The other variance we are looking for is the existing driveway. The required setback from the side property line is five feet away. And this is... This driveway, existing one, is right, almost right on the property line. It's existing, but if board insists, we can move it away, but it's in perfect shape. And neighbor actually is here, and they don't seem to have any issue with that either. So that's the...
In fact, the neighbor who's here and is willing to testify in favor of the application, his driveway abuts the same lot line with a similar lack of compliance?
Yes.
Right above... They both abut against the common lot line?
Yes. And the last point was, we were told that we are exceeding the building coverage, which probably is a mistake. I redid all the calculations. It's probably, I don't know, we showed in our application that we are less than 20%. But we were told that we are exceeding 20% of building.
By one percent?
It's a de minimis amount. It's a de minimis amount.
Thank you.
It's hardly even, you know, 20.85 versus 20.96. I don't even think we could figure out how much that is.
If they get rid of that concrete pad, we'll pull it even.
And we are also in compliance with the lot coverage, so we are well below the overall imperious coverage limit.
The style of home, it's like a colonial, small colonial. Is that how you would describe it?
Uh, yes, it's actually more like custom-made because of the elderly parents. We kept one bedroom downstairs, or the master bedroom downstairs. It's more like central hall colonial.
Is there a basement?
It will have a basement.
It'll have a basement and then two stories. And it will fit in with the neighborhood. There's been a lot of new construction in Lake Hurlock.
Yes.
It will fit in, right? It's similar to what we have?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay. Does the board need any more information on this?
I'd just like to get the neighbor on record saying he's okay with it.
Happy to do that. When you direct.
Yep.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said I'd like to get the neighbor on record just...
Oh, yeah, yes.
To attest to the fact that he's okay with it.
Okay, so you have no other witnesses?
That's correct.
You wanna save your summation until we go through the positive and negative?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, are there any members of the public who... Are there any members of the public who wish to question this witness? I hear none seen on. Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? Please come forward. We're gonna swear you in, okay?
Sir, you raise your right hand. You swore a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self you got?
I do.
And for the record, state and spell your name.
Scott LaFave. L is in Larry. E is in Edward. F is in Frank. E is in Edward. B is in Boy. B R E.
You, sir, are the owner of 19 Longview?
Yes.
Avenue, and that joins this subject property, is that correct?
Correct.
And do you have any positive or negative feelings about the application?
Positive is it's... They're gonna be improving their property or in their house, and that's... We're looking to do the exact same thing next year when my son and his fiancee get married. So we kinda wanna bring up the neighborhood to where the rest of it is.
And is it true that your driveway abuts the lot line that's in common between your property and the subject property?
Yes.
Okay, and the fact that the applicant's driveway is not further than five feet from the lot line, that's... Could any problems?
No, not at all.
Any problems with the shed, four feet, three inches off the line?
No, that's...
Any problems with the concrete pad?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of this?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You just wanna say a few words. I mean, you're kinda...
I got a quick question. I hate to hound on that concrete pad, but if you're not doing anything with it, why do you keep it?
It can be removed.
I just, you know, less imperious coverage, why not? I mean, if you don't use it.
The daughter has... Can answer the question.
Oh, they like... The kids like it? When we were kids, they had... They put our spruce up there. And then as we grew up, we just kinda... It's so far back. It's probably about 60 feet back from the lot, and it's under a tree. There's nothing there. It's just a...
I hate to see the applicant spend money to take it out of there if it's not bothering anybody.
There's no lot coverage or impermeable surface issue with the application.
Imperious coverage when we can.
Yes, I understand. But I mean, they are...
Believe me, on all the commercial applications, we do.
Well, then, they may put it in for the daughter's kids to swing someday.
Okay.
Someone make a recommendation?
Yeah, I'll make it. I'm in favor of this application since it is bringing up the neighborhood and it is bringing up to date, and it is a family need. And especially neighbors and all very cooperative with this application, and they have no issues with us. So I'm in favor of this application.
I think it's a very, very nice thing. People wanna stay in Parsippany versus move to another town. They wanna improve their lot. And you know what they say, live long enough to be a burden to your children. So... Anyway. Someone frame a resolution.
Sure. Application 20.08, Zafar Tour, 17 Longview Avenue, Block 589, Lot 15, Zone R4. Recommend granting a C variance to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling with detached one-story carport patio and sheds contrary to Section 430-35, Columns 3, 8, and 10. 430-275, point X.
Second, Snyder.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Mr. Joskowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
Mr. Perik?
Yes.
Mr. Passad?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Willins?
Yes.
Chairman Irakim?
Yes. Results of variance is granted. We memorialize this in two weeks.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Good luck to you all.
Thank you.
Two for one.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good to see you, Scott.
Nice to see you.
You well? You got that mapple?
Yep.
Two home runs, John. Listen, John.
Simone?
I think it's Starry hit a homerun, and we'll make one. He's the best... I think he's the best hitter in the league.
That one going, Robert.
Oh, yeah, we're doing better.
You have a good night.
We're doing better.
Twenty-two minutes and 30 seconds.
John. John. Frazier hit one. Okay, case number 2020. Case number 2020?
Do you want me to keep my mask over my nose, or can I pull it down to talk?
It's, what's the board's preference?
If it was up to me, we wouldn't be wearing these, but unfortunately
Doesn't wanna make sure you guys hear me, okay?
Do, do, do the best you can, that's, that's fine.
Thank you. Good evening. Simone Cali, Cali Law LLC, on behalf of the applicant, Jihad Zaidan. Um, we're here tonight seeking ratification of a previously installed gravel driveway, and we are also seeking variance relief for situating the applicant's storage trailer in the front yard setback, which is, um, contrary to the code. Uh, we intend to be brief, I know this board has a, a pretty lengthy agenda tonight. Uh, unless you have any initial questions of me, I'd like to call our first and only witness. Thank you, that would be our project engineer.
Sir, raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony about to give before the boards yourself, you got?
I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name?
Yes, John C. Ferenti, S E, R R, A N T E.
And you'll be providing engineering testimony?
That's correct.
And, uh, your license in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And you've been qualified before other boards as an expert witness in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, hundredth of all.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, witness has been qualified as an expert.
Okay.
Pete, before we get started, this is a prohibited use in this area. So, I think it becomes a D1 variance. I think you might wanna
Come up to the microphone, please.
Sure.
This is an application for use of the accessory structure.
The ordinance specifically prohibits storage trailers.
Correct.
So, if that's a specific
In the front
Objection, then that use, that proposed location, you think because it's in the front yard, it merely a hardship variance as opposed to a use?
Correct. We think that because it's an accessory use, it's not a principal use, it's not a principal structure.
But it's the storage of the, um, trailer.
It's a
Not a, it's not a fixed structure.
Storage, right, and storage
But it's not a fixed, like a shed.
Correct, it's nothing fixed.
So, I, I, you know, John
Let me read this again, it's in the zoning report. I thought I read it was up to a storage
It would be like a commercial vehicle
Trailers.
And a residential. What I read after was a trailer, like a, um, camping trailer.
No. It's, it's, it's in the report from the, uh, zoning officer, and she's basically got the language there. I can't remember when, but I know we had a trailer case some years ago. And we went around and around with it. Generally, when a zoning audit says something is prohibited, it, it makes it more than a bulk variance. Which the only category after that is use. Hello, Pete, what do you think?
No, I agree, um.
I don't know whether you wanna proceed with this case tonight, with the witnesses that you have, on a D variance or not, or do you wanna appeal that decision of the board?
Well, if we're, we have to put on a D1 case, then we'd like to put on, um, substantial planning testimony to justify the variance relief.
That's why I thought
Right. Yep. Absolutely.
You wanna give the next available data, I guess. Adjourn with, um, extensions, Mr. Chairman?
So, John, you're convinced it's a D1?
Both Pete and I agree that it's a D1. When, when the word appears prohibited, it doesn't go
Mm-hmm.
There's not much interpretation of that. So, it, it, it's just prohibited, and it, it goes to use.
Even being the accessory use, let's call it?
I don't think, I just, it's, word prohibited in the front yard, but it's accessory of principle, it's prohibited.
You think you'd do better if you had a planner here?
I think to protect my client, our applicant, we do need planning testimony for a D1, yes.
Uh, when can we put them on, uh?
My next opening is December 2nd.
December 2?
December 2. September 2?
Yes.
Have, have we got a picture of this facility in the
Of course.
Or you wanna do it?
I would just add some pictures if you want to see.
Would you give them to the secretary in, in, uh, department?
Can I mark that, anyone? Those are not in the packet, right?
No.
I think we're going to look at the photograph. You're gonna mend the packet to include those.
Yes.
I'll give one to John. John, here.
So, we're gonna adjourn this?
Did you order one picture?
There's a, uh, there's two pictures.
Yeah.
There's two photographs there.
Where are they?
One shows the, uh, existing conditions for the driveway. I apologize, I don't think I get it out of the picture.
But we're gonna get this in the cases, but that's it?
Yes.
I just want John to have it, so that
All I got is, bro, we simply get one of the, of the
Just, 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 John?
Yeah, and there are two, two, two different angles.
Two different, hey, there's actually a better photograph. This is What, there's
You're thinking
Really, uh, de minimis, uh
Yeah, I'm, that's a situation, I just said more of a, you, but, uh, don't need to
Unfortunately, when we get D1
This is much more, uh, shows exactly the situation.
Ms. Cali?
Right.
So, you're okay with December 2nd?
Yes, we will take December 2nd, we'll come back, and we'll prosecute a D1 variance application.
And there will be, uh, no, no further notice required?
Thank you.
You'll, you'll grant us whatever extension is necessary?
Yes, if you take it verbally, we'll grant the extension, otherwise I'll submit a letter to, um
I mean, if you wanna follow up with the letter, that's fine, but verbal, it's on the record.
Yes, it's on the record that we will grant the extension.
In 30 years, we've only ever had one person deny that they said it, so. Okay, do I have a motion to carry this case to December 2nd, Mr. Jaskowitz? Is there a second?
Second Snyder.
Second Snyder and Mr. Kaplan, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Time marches on. Okay, okay.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
We've got Stephen Brunskill.
Hi, you can come in now.
This is like the doctor's office, direct to call you when you park it down. Man, you're playing with my doctor for next week. He does not remember.
Yeah.
When you get to the parking lot, call us.
I did that today.
And they had a wide, uh
I didn't put a flu shot in.
Oh, you want flu shot already?
I haven't, not yet.
I gotta get a tetanus shot, because my tetanus shot's 10 years old. We remember it was the year my fiancee was born, it was 10. So, my wife says, we gotta get tetanus shot.
They, they make it convenient, they text you. We deal with
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We had those guys, the guy who had the, uh, car dealer shipped up on the interview.
The Subaru, behind the Subaru?
Yeah.
Yeah.
By the CDS?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, this is an air conditioning unit?
Yeah.
I thought we, I thought we had, straightened those out. Oh, it's on a
Didn't we go through that? Didn't you try to get that fixed, that they wouldn't have to come back for the air conditionings?
I think it was side yard setbacks, but this is in a front yard. I think this is a front yard, is that, or am I wrong?
But they're replacing it, right?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's replace the AC unit and
No, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong. My six-foot-up voice. Yes, thank you. This is case 2021, Stephen Brunskill?
Correct.
Uh, installing air conditioning unit. Wanna swear and then, Mr.?
Yes, uh, sir, raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony about to give before the boards yourself, you got?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, uh, your name is Stephen Brunskill, B R U N S K I L L?
Yes.
You're the owner of the subject property?
With my wife, correct.
Thank you, you're sworn.
Mr. Brunskill, you wanna tell us a little bit about what's going on here?
I was I was told that I had to submit the application, because last year, the company that had installed the unit in our, in my house failed to, uh, do it themselves, so they, a year later, I was asked to submit the application, and, uh, the compressor was put in the same place that the prior one was.
So, you, you had an air conditioning unit there?
Yes.
You got a new air conditioning unit, same place?
Exactly.
And unfortunately, you run into a variance situation?
Yes.
Um, how long, how long ago, how long was the other air conditioning unit there? Any idea?
The prior one?
Yeah.
It was there when I purchased the house back in December of 2008.
Okay, and it was obviously there, probably an older unit, been there maybe?
Yes.
Anybody got any problems with this, any questions?
No.
Where is it?
It's on the side, you can see, it's a little square.
Okay, all right, I see now.
This box with a circle.
Oh, I see it, okay, got it, all right.
Let me ask you a question. You went to the, the, whoever installed this got the permit from town?
They were going to pursue it, but, uh, at, in the end, they did not do it, so
That's okay. And, and somebody from the town realized that the old air conditioner was gone, and there was a new one there?
Uh, I think because it, I think an application was put in by them, but, uh, they didn't follow through with it, and I guess because the application was made
Okay, somebody picked it up.
It was traced.
It's like trying to clean up paperwork and got it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Any member, there's no members of the public, so I won't ask for any comments or testimony. Um, it's obvious, this is, uh, an easy, an easy, uh, variance to grant, so I'm on frame resolution, so we can move on.
Yeah, I will. An application 20 colon 21, Stephen Brunskill, um, I move that we approve, um, his air conditioning installation, um, that's contrary to section 430-35, column 4.
Second, Kaplan.
Any discussion, Nora call the roll.
Mr. Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Perik.
Yes.
Mr. Passad. Mr. Reddy.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Ms. Willen. Chairman Irakane.
Yes, results of variance is granted, we memorialize this in two weeks. Not gonna have any effect, you'll get a zoning permit from, uh, from Nora in the mail.
Fine, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, your average.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
What was that, 48 seconds?
Yeah, but it's, that's, uh, average, you're 50.
Oh, I'm, I'm
You're back to your average.
No, when I do 12 an hour, I'm back to my average. All right, this is gonna be fun. Has anybody seen this, uh, fence besides me?
No, why?
Hi.
Where is it?
You can come in now.
Where is it? I don't
It's, uh, on Lake Shore Drive, Lake Hurwacka.
Another person, their neighbor right across on the other side of
In the corner of Longview.
This road, they came for a variance, and it was, you know, last year, and they were not giving what they wanted.
Why can't I
Some people think it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is permission.
Yeah, yeah, people live by that rule.
But Snyder doesn't like that.
You know me so well. Hello. I'm good with it.
Hello, you can come in now. You're welcome.
Two side yards.
What are we gonna do when it gets cold?
Why can't I picture it?
It hasn't been up very long. I spotted it a few months ago.
Yeah.
What? This fence. I don't know who recorded it.
Didn't we have one down here before?
Yeah, we had a whole bunch of them, John. We had a number of them.
Get over there.
And not fences. On two, on two streets.
Okay.
You're the applicant?
Yes.
You can go up to the microphone?
There's an objector coming in.
Could you raise your right hand? You swear firm testimony about to give before the boards yourself, you got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name? Is it Anna A A N S A N A Z I R?
Yeah.
You're the owner of the subject property?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, the witness is sworn.
Uh, okay, so, you, uh, I drove past your property a few months ago and almost drove off the road when I saw
I don't mean to interrupt, excuse me, there's an objector, I
Oh, okay.
He said he was coming in, I don't know, I don't wanna
Yeah. You wanna poke your head out and see?
Everything's invalid, yeah, I don't know what he's doing.
Okay. Let's get back. Ms. Mazara, um This fence, how long ago was this fence constructed?
Um, in early May.
Early May, okay. And did you put this up yourself, or did you have a contractor put this up for you?
I have a contractor put it up.
Okay, you got a contractor, can you stand closer to the microphone, just so we make sure we can hear you? And in, in the course of putting up this fence, was, was there any discussion with him as to whether a permit was, was needed to put this?
Yes, there was.
And what did he say?
He said for the fence, you do not need a permit. So, I just went with what I was told, um, my fault, I should have investigated more, but he said it's not a construction on your property, it's just a fence, you do not need a permit. So, I went with what I was told, I was under massive stress, I think, um, I shared on my application that my son was diagnosed with autism on April 28th, and, uh, with all this testing and everything that was going on during pandemic, and couple of incidents that I have had with him, that was my solution to get the fence up, and his safety was my main priority.
Now, I noticed that when I drive on Side Road, Long, Longview Avenue, it appears that, that it's open in the back. Is the fence 360 degrees around your property solid?
It is not.
It's not? So, if your son was for some reason outside, um, there's no fence gate or anything that would prevent him from going through your driveway and out onto, uh, Longview, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Did you use a reputable company for this fence? Or was it a, just a contractor who?
It was a contractor that somebody had suggested, he had done some work for them, um, in New York, so I just called him, he was able to come in, he gave me an estimate. I didn't even look around, or I didn't even look for other options, I just went ahead, 'cause I wanted to get it done in a timely manner for many, you know, as I said, for my son
Okay, how, how old is, how old is your son?
He's six years old.
Six years old. What is he, about three feet, three and a half feet?
Probably about four feet.
Four feet, okay. Don't you think that, um, a lower fence with maybe some decorative across the top, you know, open, uh, would have looked a lot better on, uh, Lake Shore Drive than what you have?
I wasn't thinking decoration, I mean, I really
Decoration may not be a good word. Some, some open, you know, four foot high with one foot of opening. I, I, I gotta, I gotta tell you, this board does not grant variances for six-feet fence, stockade fences, like you have, uh, unless there are extreme extenuating circumstances. And you just told me that the back of this fence is open. So, if he's playing in the front yard, you know, a dog goes by or something, he decides he's gonna follow the dog, they shoot right at the back?
I have had incidents where he ran to the road, Lake Shore Drive.
Mm-hmm.
So, that was my reason of, you know, covering that side, I haven't had any incidents, and usually he's, he's playing towards the back, um, that's why I had it done the way I have, I, if you can make an exception.
How is it installed? Is it in concrete?
Yeah.
Every post is in a concrete
Yeah.
And it's one foot from the property line? It's one foot from the property line, as I see?
You don't know.
We don't know? Well, I'll, I'll tell you what I have an issue, well, I have an issue with this, this whole thing, um, um, and I agree with the chairman here, but in addition to that, you're at an intersection. This is a dangerous location where vehicular operators have a limited line of sight because of this fence. And so, um, I would add that as another reason why I wouldn't support this. And so I would add that as another reason why I wouldn't support this.
I mean, I was asked to get the crash data, and I did get that from the police department. There hasn't been anything, any kind of accident.
Because there's, there was no fence there. So let's not make new data, right? Where accidents could increase in this location because of the limited line of sight that this six-foot-high fence has created, especially in close proximity to the roadway. And for all of us who know Lake Hiawatha as well as we do, you know, we do have traffic issues there where people do not respect the twenty-five and thirty-five mile per hour zones, which should be a great concern to you, because let's say your child now runs into the roadway, okay? There's no way a, a motorist can even predict his trajectory because of the obstruction of that fence until he's already in the roadway. If I, if I'm reading this correctly.
Well, if you, if they're traveling on Longview, and he was to be on Lake Shore Drive, there's, if there was no fence at all, the opportunity to see him would be much greater.
To stop.
Than it, than it is right now.
Exactly.
I don't know. Have you had any discussions with your contractor as to the possibility you might have to take this fence down? And is he, is he gonna compensate you for this?
He, I had called him once after I received the first letter, and I said you had misinformed me because the information that I received from you, I didn't need a permit, so I went ahead and trusted you. I spent so much money during the time I was furloughed, and this wasn't an easy decision for me, obviously the money wise. And he said, no, I have installed many fences, there is never a permit involved. You, I said I have a letter in my hand that I just received today. And obviously we got into an argument because he kept on denying, and then since then I have called him a couple of times, he hasn't answered his phone. I haven't been able to get a hold of him since then. The fence cost me about nine thousand dollars.
I'm sure it did, I, I, you know, I, I put vinyl fence around my house, not the front yard, but the backyard, and it's not cheap. Mr. King, do we have the ability to subpoena the contractor and have him come here?
Yes.
We do?
He's, he's from New York.
He's from New York?
Yeah. That's what she said.
I can set a subpoena, but.
Oh. So he may not even have a license to do business in New Jersey?
She would have a, yes, you're probably right, she probably doesn't. She'd have a, she could get trouble damages, it's a, it's a consumer fraud act case. But that doesn't help us.
No.
Yeah, maybe, maybe he has also an office in New Jersey.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet on it.
What, the witness testified?
We can still subpoena him in New York.
I can set a subpoena to him.
You said he was a word-of-mouth person.
Yeah.
From, from friends of yours.
Yeah, she said that.
Are those friends in New Jersey, or are they in New York?
They are in New York.
We can help you.
So the fence is, the six-foot fence on Lake Shore is a hundred and thirty-three feet, and it's the whole property, right?
It is on Lake Shore Drive, Longview Avenue, and it goes towards the driveway.
And your, your lot is not, the rest of your lot is not fenced? The whole lot?
Just the driveway is not fenced, yeah.
So am I allowed to speak? Or no?
Not yet. We'll let you know.
Do, do you know how far is the fence from the curb?
It's at least eight to ten feet. He had told me, he said we would ideally do six to eight feet. And I said I wanted, you know, I wanted to make sure there was enough time, enough space. So he said we can do ten feet. So it's, it's at least eight to ten feet.
Did you happen to pay by credit card?
No.
You probably paid cash.
No.
You're, you're between a rock and a hard place, I have to tell you that. Because your neighbor is here, and I'm assuming he's not happy. We're not happy. I mean, I saw this fence when it went up, and I said, there's no way that fence is legal. No way. And that's not to say there are other fences like yours in the neighborhood that people haven't reported, okay? There are. And there's been a lot of fences that we've approved, again, reasonable setback, five feet, one, one foot open, okay? At least it doesn't look like Newark State or something, okay? I don't know what the board's feeling is, but I, I'm kinda inclined to carry this case and have Mr. King send this contractor a subpoena. At least give it a shot.
I do it to chairman, but also, it sounds hokey, but maybe calling like Channel Nine News or one of those fraud busters and telling them your empathetic case that you were just diagnosed, you had a child just diagnosed with autism, you went and tried to get a contractor, this guy told you this, it ended up being all false. I mean, maybe that's some, like the chairman said, we were very sympathetic to your, to your case, but it's a bad one.
So if we bring the contractor here, what, what are we getting out of that?
I haven't been able to.
This is a similar case to North Riverway, right?
If you attempt to have the contract and relocate the fence at no cost.
And when he says no.
Well, hold on, more than just relocate the fence, because now we, we still have a six-foot-high fence.
He, he could relocate it pretty much in conformance. She's not gonna get the fence off her old front yard area. She's gonna, I would think he would have it off the corners of the house, she'd have her rear yard fenced in, and that's permitted.
The other, the other thing, Mr. Kaplan, is most likely this man does not have a New Jersey license.
You're able to contact the, you're able to, you can call him and contact him?
He has, he didn't answer the phone, I have even tried with my home number, and he hasn't answered the phone.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, she has a civil remedy, which is the, the consumer fraud act. It, it, it's a fee shifting for attorney's fees, and also she could get trouble damage.
What's the turnaround time on that? Months, a year, yeah, okay.
The other, the other thing is, you might want to engage an attorney and have an attorney send him a letter. You have as a name and address, right?
I have his name and a phone number.
Did you have a contract with him?
Does it tell him? No.
That's another violation.
So we can't even subpoena him if we don't have an address?
No, I hid him cash.
Was this a family friend?
No, somebody I used to work with.
Did you make, did you make him out a check?
I, no, I paid cash.
But she does have a civil remedy to recoup any losses.
Ms. Nazir, I'm gonna give you some time. But you've gotta do some homework. Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll hear from. First of all, but her case is not over yet, Peter, so he can only ask questions at this point.
That's correct.
Do you have any questions of her that you'd like to ask her about this?
Questions, not for her. Questions for the board.
All right, come up and identify yourself. I like your hat.
And, and sir, just so you know, the, the way this works, at this point of the proceeding, you'd ask questions, when she would rest, then you'd come up and testify. But the chairman is going to probably adjourn this to give her an opportunity to get some more information with regard to the person who installed it, to see if they can come in or if they're ready, is that fair, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Understood. My question is, obviously, I've been a, well, my, first of all, my name is Robert Treeby. I've been in Lake Hiawatha resident for over twenty years. It's my first homeownership, but with my parents, I've owned homes in Ocean County. I grew up in Jersey City, New Jersey. My question actually is, is it norm for, normal procedure or protocol for residents to erect fences and things of this nature without coming for a permit first? It seems that this is the cart before the horse. Do most residents usually put the cart after the horse, and do it the proper way?
Some do, but most don't.
You do not need a building permit, you need a zoning permit for this particular thing. Zoning permit only. And zoning permit is based on the, the parameters of that zone, which I think would be, what is that, an R five, John?
Yeah.
R five, R five, sixty by a hundred lots, so much setback, so much lot coverage, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, fences have their own regulations.
Yeah, fences, front yard fences, and she's on a corner, she has two front yards.
Understood.
Maximum four feet high, fifty percent open.
I've, I've read the code.
Like your old picket fence that, who painted that picket fence?
So my, 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 my question actually was, you know, I, my dad has gone for variances in his homes and whatnot, and he's always known to go to the town and ask if a permit is required first. So my question really was, in Parsippany, do you run into this situation often where people say, oh, I didn't know that a permit was?
Yes, we run, run into quite often.
Quite often, okay, that was my question.
And there are ones that we don't run into that just go ahead and do things, and nobody ever says anything, and they just exist.
I'm, I'm well aware of that.
I'm sure if you rode around your neighborhood, you'd see it.
Uh, thank you very much.
So, Ms. Ms. Nate?
I like the idea of carrying it out, just for clarity, if this fence, a solid fence on the front yard can be four foot high?
No. That's fifty percent open.
Can't have any solid fence.
Fifty percent open, four feet high.
So she can just cut a couple feet off?
So, Ms. Nazir, I recommend that you do whatever you can to find this contractor and get his address, complete name and address, to Nora, okay? And I recommend that you do that as, as quickly as possible. I wanna carry this to next month, okay?
It'll be December second.
Well, can't we just?
And do we want an extension?
No?
I, I would have somebody else call him.
How about, how about the first meeting in November, can we squeeze in it?
And let him believe that there's new business coming his way. You'll have a better chance of getting, if the number works, that's the way it lands.
November fourth.
Okay. It's a big job, I need you to give me an address and information, and I'll send you the, the plans, and that's how you get a shot at getting it.
Have a friend or a neighbor call him.
I've heard you can do that.
What's that, you, I've done that.
Yes, he's told.
Yeah, I've, I have my secretary call on, on her, on her cell phone when it, when needed to be, to be done. You, I want you back here November fourth, okay? I want you to agree you'll give us an extension of time, and we will not require you to re-notice anybody. But you've got it, you've got to get that, you've got to get that guy on notice, okay? All right? And get that information, and we will subpoena him to come here to try and help you out. He's gotta pay for this. If you're gonna move that fence, he's gotta pay for it. And he's, and if he does not have a license to, to operate in the state of New Jersey, he'll get reported to the state of New Jersey.
Cause the case is not gonna be in your favor, and you're gonna get stuck with the bill, so you gotta get this guy on the hook.
Okay.
A friend recommended him, is the friend still attached with that person?
Well, she also.
It's somebody who I used to work with, long time ago, in two thousand and five. So, and one day we were just talking, and she had, you know, I, I shared my information about my son, that this is what I'm going through, cause she had a disabled child. So that's how she said that, you know, I, I know somebody who had done some work for me in Staten Island, New York. Reach out and see what he says. So he came in, he gave me an estimate, he was the only person I spoke with, and I confirmed, I said I did not need a permit for this, and he said, no, the fence, we don't need a permit, I trusted him, and I went ahead.
Okay, motion to carry this case to November fourth, without further notice, and with the proper extensions. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll see you on November fourth, but get that information.
Sir, you won't, you won't get another notice, so you wrote down that date? Yes.
Can I address this, Azir? I have some advice for him.
Well, you can talk there on your own, but her, her case is over.
Thank you.
It'll be good if you can help her, that'd be good.
Thank you. Good luck, ma'am.
I just don't wanna see Lake Shore Drive turned into a 287.
That, that is, that is our concern too, sir.
Hey, John? John? Seven oh one. How did they get him? I, I just, how do, how did the Rockies get him? Must have been. They, they got that guy Trockman, who's good, they picked him up for nothing. And, and boy, boy, that's just. He can't hit what? What? Oh, backup shots.
But you know, Justin, Justin in his report says the side, side distance is okay. He says that. He won't meet the fence, if I ask how far in the house, standing inside, this is.
Oh, he's, he's like, what?
He was a side distance. Yeah, but it's, it's drawing, it's not like, but it's.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. He can't hit him. He's not even, he's not even on the radar. Frazier's. Frazier's batting three oh three.
The person off on this side, Longview, like you're.
Mr. O'Neal, are this a social visitor, are you representing someone? Mr. O'Neal? Is this social, or are you representing somebody?
How's it going?
In your driveway?
In your driveway, New York.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of missing information here.
Yeah, yeah.
There was, there's a New York car parked in your driveway. So there's some New York connection, yeah, yeah. I think we're gonna find out it's our cousin.
I thought you meant here.
No, no, no.
We have big dibs going on.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, let's call case twenty twelve, Susan Petrovic. A devariance to construct an addition.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neal here on behalf of Ms. Petrovic, who is to my immediate right, a little bit behind me there. If I can just introduce the board to the application, this is a devariance, D two specifically, for the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. The building is in a B four zone, it is a salon in the front with a five hundred square foot about apartment in the rear. What Ms. Petrovic is proposing is to add a sunroom to that of dimensions eleven by fourteen to the back there, that's gonna generate the devariance, because we're expanding the use. But it's also gonna generate a small building, imperfect, building coverage variance from thirty percent permitted to thirty-three percent now. And the setback in the back is being reduced down to nine feet, which is also a variance fifteen feet permitted there. Before I bring up Ms. Petrovic, I'd like to just ask the board to think about a concept involving in these D two variances, and that's something called the permissible expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. And what that is, is that's some expansion of a non-conforming use that doesn't really dramatically change the nature of the use. We're all familiar, there's a very famous case about a restaurant that expanded its pre-existing non-conforming use. And he said, well, I'm doing the same things I've always been doing. And the zoning officer said, yes, your restaurant added a nightclub and a ballroom though, so you're not doing the same thing. You've expanded. But what Ms. Petrovic is doing, what she's gonna describe, is she's taking that five hundred square foot apartment, adding that less than five hundred square feet to the back to make it just one, still one apartment, still one bedroom, still one use. So if we had had this case when the zoning permit was filed, that's the argument I would have made at that time, that it was a permissible expansion of that pre-existing non-conforming use. So while you're thinking of that.
Ma'am, could you raise your right hand?
Good evening.
You swear a firm testimony about to give before the board, choose yourself, you got? You swear a firm testimony about the stuff you got?
I do.
And you're Susan Petrovic, P-E-T-R-O-V-I-C?
Correct.
And you're the owner of the subject property?
Yes.
All right, thank you. You're sworn, Mr. Chairman. The witness is sworn.
Thank you. Ms. Petrovic, you've owned the property since about 98?
Yes.
It's got a 1,300 square foot building on it right now?
Yes.
The property itself is 4,000 square feet?
The property?
Yeah, the whole property.
Yes. I know the house.
Now, you want to add a sunroom on the back. Why is that?
Correct. I really can't use the backyard for health reasons. Anything over 75 degrees, I'm locked in the house. Anything colder than 65, I'm locked in the house. So I figured, I enjoy my garden. I built the garden in the back part of the house. And I figured it'd be nice to be able to enjoy the outdoors, yet being indoors in a controlled temperature climate. And it would give me more space to do my yoga, my arts and crafts, and just have a little bit more livable space than what I have now.
But it's still just gonna be you there in the front?
Yes.
And you're not really add, you're not adding a bedroom or anything like that?
No, no. This is total relaxation. Should just have a zen moment and just get out of my space with just a TV in there and just have a nice room to have for myself.
Do you operate the business in the front?
Not anymore, no.
No? Is that a tenant now? Is that-
Yes.
Somebody rents from you?
So what's the square footage of this building that you now inhabit?
The whole building, including the salon?
No, your, your portion of this building.
It's about 550 square feet with a loft bedroom upstairs.
That's, that's, that's what you are living in?
Yes.
And then the rest is the tenant?
Yes.
Is it one or two levels?
A second level, it's, it's a loft bedroom.
So it's, okay, it's two levels, right.
And what is the square foot of the addition?
11 by 14. About the size of my living room is now, but without a lot of furniture, won't be in there.
Two stores?
No, it will go out of the French doors that are there by my deck right now. That would be removed and it will be flushed to walking straight out.
So it's gonna be like the side of your deck? The size of your deck, excuse me?
No, it would be bigger than the deck. My deck is very tiny.
Okay.
I don't even use my deck.
Any other questions by the board? No. I will state for the record, there, there's no members of the public, that's part of your group?
Yeah.
For the record, there's no members of the public here. Any other witnesses, Mr.?
Oh, I'm sorry, Agnes is the sales representative from Patio Enclosures.
Oh.
So if anyone has any more questions about the, the roof-
The addition will be in conformity with the existing house, siding, whatever, windows, try and make it fit to the, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask you if it fits into the neighborhood because I don't think there's a consistent plan in that neighborhood.
Yeah, no, it's very mishmash.
Yeah, so this is gonna be all windows, like an atrium? Is that how it's going to be?
It's gonna have a regular roof.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I get a lot of sun in my backyard, because my house faces east. So the sun comes up in my kitchen window and goes around. So I would have a nice shaded area even, you know, when the sun hits about 3:30, when it's hitting the hair salon in the front, I'm in the shade in the back. But that's like a whole day gone for me to not be-
Is it, is it a 12-month-a-year room or is it?
I can put a, a-
You're gonna have heat and everything?
Separate unit if I want.
Okay, it's gonna have insulated windows so you, in case you-
Correct.
I see a, over there.
It's, it's a prefab. Is it prefab?
It comes in in pieces, but it's not, it's not carted in it, just-
Yeah, it's manufactured to, yeah.
Any other questions? You got any other witnesses?
I have no further witnesses.
Uh, we're not, D variance, we don't really need a planner, do we?
Well, she owns it personally, so we did not come with a planner this evening. This is a personal, a personally-owned property, a personal application for her herself.
Okay.
Not commercial in nature.
Okay. You don't want a son, do you?
Well, I guess I already did in my introduction.
Okay.
I'll just reaffirm that.
Uh, once again, I will state there's no members of the public here, so there will be no testimony by members of the public. Anybody have a problem with this addition? No. Jaskowitz, you're shaking your head no, so it must mean you're gonna make a brief statement, right?
I am.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna vote for it.
Good, okay. Someone frame a resolution?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, case, or application number 2012, Susan Petrovic, 176 Kingston Road, Block 244, Lot 18, in the B4 zone. I recommend that we grant the D variance to construct the addition as proposed.
Any discussion?
Um, I, I do. I mean, I'll, I'm gonna vote for it, but I'll tell you what I have an issue with. And, you know, your health condition, I guess, is paramount in this equation. But I just, you know, your property has so little, I don't know, it's all impervious. Um, but-
It's very beautiful and well-maintained and, uh-
I understand, but it's just all impervious. It's just, you know, and I'm, I'm just going to concede to, you know, the, the, the health condition that you cite.
Any other discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Mr. Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Farid.
Yes.
Mr. Passad.
Yes.
Mr. Reddy.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yeah.
Mr. Willing. Chairman, I would like to-
Yes. Results of variances granted. We'll memorialize this at our first meeting in October, right?
Yes, sir.
And both of you, enjoy.
Thank you very much. Be well.
That was on a motion to adjourn?
Snyder.
In favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you very much for your attendance this evening, as always.
Thank you.
Well, all I know is we better have, we better have straightened this out by, by the last meeting of the year. Otherwise, we're gonna have to bring cop kids in here and stuff like that.
Okay, well, we have to bring your paper with us.
Take a shower, get yourself another one. He's got two, Leo's got two.